Yes.
Did I give you a copy of the case?
No, but I have.
Okay. You better go off. Before we get started tonight, I wanted to remind everybody that if you're going to speak, uh, please stand up and state your name. It makes it easier later for minutes. Um, if she needs to go back and review for minutes. So please stand up and speak clearly.
Your chance sales coming very good.
With that, I was working that.
Yes.
Well, we did about reinforce the amount we did last year. The crowd was sitting out a lot earlier this year than I remember last year.
There was not growing crowd all day. Or we got on the streets or stuff like that.
And then it's just less seven dogs.
Little guys.
How you doing?
Doing well. See? We're starting to search.
Yep.
Okay.
You have plenty of time. The minutes go by so when you're watching. All right, we'll get started with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. All right, we have a forum. And first item of business is the swearing in of Tyler Kirker, our new town council member. John, would you?
I would love to do it. I would be happy to do it. Uh, do you want to take his picture or something? We do your thing through the conversation there. We're gonna take you. All right, Mr. Kirker, please repeat. Raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and diligently.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
At the office of Town Board Member of Oldenburg.
Of the Office of Town Board Member of Oldenburg.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I still need your autograph.
The old sig on here.
No, he just, he just needs to sign it.
Welcome to the board.
Okay. Yep. Yes, is it on the agenda?
No.
We're gonna turn the clerk portion.
Okay.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is Brad Laker.
I would like to. I guess the plan is to tear off my existing garage. And then rebuild a three-car garage facing towards Water Street. Where my garage currently faces towards Douglas. And then I would move my driveway and everything over to Water Street. Make the front yard into just a yard again.
You have plans?
I mean, it's just a hand drawn. I don't know what you need for now. So the one side is existing, the other side is proposed.
And this must be.
Yeah, so I didn't, yeah, I didn't label the street on there.
So Douglas is at your front door now?
Douglas is currently at the front doors, I guess.
Do you have a one-car garage now?
Yes.
Okay. So it's quite a bit wider.
It's.
Depth, the depth of it?
So it's currently fifteen, well, like fourteen, ten wide by twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty-four.
And what I want to do is like thirty feet by forty-four.
And how close does that come to your property lines?
Uh, it would not even, it would not, I don't know what the specification is, but I think it's ten feet, correct? I don't know how that deal is just that. But the road, I would want to be twenty-five feet off the road.
I don't recall what the.
It's ten feet.
Is it ten feet from the road?
Yep.
Okay, so you fall with on the. You can all go. And there's no utilities underneath there?
Yeah, everything.
Anywhere?
Everything's overhead, yeah, on the streets.
Okay.
As far as they're right, Dave.
And it's gonna be, is your house currently siding or brick?
Brick.
And it's gonna be brick?
Um, so what I was planning on doing is taking the brick, salvaging what's on the current garage. And doing like a, assuming there's enough, like a three-foot wainscote at the bottom, and then be white siding from there up. It's currently brick to the first story, and then siding up now.
Okay.
So.
So it basically will match.
Try to tie it in the best I can. If I could find brick, I would prefer to do the whole thing brick, but I don't know that I can match the brick from. That are nineteen-sixties.
Okay.
So the plan is to salvage that and make like a wainscote, like a three-foot wainscote, and then go siding up.
What do you think, Dave? You got the?
The Tim's fine, yes.
Here's an old bottle.
Two dollars, and then I'll, I'll make the building for that. I'm getting those tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, if you, if you don't, if you just.
Okay.
You don't have anything covered. So as long as it's within the county. Set matters.
Okay, we tried to call, I have her number on a tape on Sterling. And she told me that I needed to talk to you guys before she would give me really any information. So she was in one of the way, she's like, until you get the permit from the town, any of our conversations are kind of a waste of time until we get started. So she wanted me to come here first.
Okay.
Here's them with stipulation. It has to either be natural stone or fired brick.
Okay, so he's gonna, there's aluminum with baked on it. Or is it only aluminum or vinyl?
It would be, I mean, it's vinyl siding now to pop, so what you're saying, yes.
All right, um, so I have him.
Motion to approve.
The building committee, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so you pay her the extremely expensive time, charge of two dollars. Okay. So you just need to go downtown and talk to Brookville and get the permit from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is, we've had, we, we had a few residents complain about parking on Main Street to Endot. So now Endot has decided this would be a good time to provide the town of Oldenburg with a parking plan for the entire stretch from Sycamore all the way down to the ninety-degree bend, um, into twenty-nine. On the east end of town. So we have a parking plan. And I'm gonna put it up on the screen here. Okay, so. It's broken down into four different sections, and it goes from Sycamore to just west of Pearl Street to begin with. And in their plan, um, since now that they're involved, we have to have three ADA spaces made available within that section of two twenty-nine, between Sycamore and the ninety-degree bend. Um, so this is their proposal for Sycamore to Pearl Street, or just west of Pearl Street. Do you see anything wrong with what they've got proposed? They have the ADA, the ADA spot is, um, go this way. Is right at the end by Pearl Street.
It jumped out to me when I looked at it was, and I'm familiar with it, it's this alley right, right between Moms and Wagners. Um, because that's been, it's still technically a thorough road, but it's been blocked off twenty-some years now. So that design obviously doesn't have space there, but everyone parks there, everyone that goes to Wagners parks there.
Okay.
That, that would be a missing spot, but also if that alley ever does open back up, we don't want parking there.
But that's easy for us to change, for them to change. So, but he said to make recommendations, um, if, if we feel like that we would like spots in places where they don't have spots.
That, that would be the one that, that jumped out. I thought everything else was, if we're gonna, gonna be putting the spaces in, I thought they were supposed to be properly.
They may have a problem with putting the space there still. Uh, but we can request them.
Yeah, it kind of depends on how much space is left there. They've obviously got a nice twenty-four feet long. And thirty feet away from the curb. Or thirty, uh, thirty feet away from the intersection, rather. Which is, which is their standard. Thirty feet from the intersection, they, they never bend off. Making them twenty-four feet long. Right. And out. So that's the only question, though, that there might be twenty-four feet in between there to put another space.
It doesn't look like it. It looks like it will type.
That's why I'm saying, you know, I just I'm all.
For, for a real space or for just getting a car in or for the, the actual space that they need, I don't think.
But the, the issue is, um, right up there, Brian. Obviously, you can see the picture, someone is parked there.
Right, somebody is parked there, and there's plenty of space.
But it won't be, it won't, it won't be a legal spot under this plan. I'm not sure if there's twenty-four feet there or not, probably not, since they didn't mark it as a space. But that would be another thing you could ask them and look at.
Right, and I, I've made a note to do so. Um, the ADA location, right at the end spot next to Pearl Street. I personally don't have a problem with that. How about you, Dave?
Just a good place to set you right there.
That's kind of, kind of was my thought. They're gonna jump out as a bad spot, they're gonna jump out as the best spot in the world, but I think anyone.
You have a business right across the street. Um, okay, we can slide down.
So before, before you leave that, the only thing I'd ask you to do is out of courtesy, there's at least two businesses impacted by this. It would be a good idea that one of the town council members, instead of Wagners and the place in the corner, say, oh, by the way, Ricky Caregore parking. I don't know, just trying to wrap my head around, I just counted, there's twenty-four spaces there. I don't know if that's more or less the same that they already have.
But whatever dumb up.
You should, as a minimum, you should at least have a courtesy of like two businesses, no, that it's gonna change.
Okay.
Greg, why is there an X on the second box?
Um, it's, it's a fire hydrant.
Okay.
If I slide this down, you can see, it says existing fire hydrant.
So are some of the businesses, now that this would be impacted, can they basically say, well, I want these four spots in front of my business to be for people coming to my restaurant? It's just all open?
It, it'll be open, parking.
Like it is now?
Yes. Now, we, we can put requests in, uh, for things like two-hour parking in certain spots. We can put requests in for ten-minute parking in certain spots. And, uh, there are places in town where we're definitely going to do that. Uh, but I don't know, I could go, uh, speak to the people at the Beautiful World and, um, and see if there'd be any requests like that.
And you know, you know, if you have plans, I can talk to them.
Okay. All right, this is the next section, and it goes from Pearl Street to Washington Street. Uh, it's pretty straightforward here. There's an ADA space right before you get to the entrance to the church parking lot. And there really isn't anything else.
Is there one on our side of the street?
Um, there.
We have one right now in front of our chapel.
There is not in this. But we can definitely request one in front of the chapel.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't think there was anything else that really stood out to me in this section. Now, when we get right here, one thing we may want to consider, um, off of two twenty-nine, is creating maybe a couple of spots on Washington Street ourselves uh, for parking and limiting the time. And like, I know, um, the Golden Turtle, uh, they have requested, and sometimes it gets full and nobody can park there for their business. Uh, maybe we can put two-hour parking during certain times. Uh, maybe two spots on the north side, the northwest corner of Washington Street. To help them with their business during business hours. That's something we would. But that's the towns, that's what we would do on our own. And that's not connected with the state here. Um, so there's nothing in this section?
Let's jump out, please.
All right, we'll make sure we ask about the ADA spot. Uh, this is, um, in front of the post office. Down to the ninety-degree bend. So now they have proposed an ADA parking space right in front of the post office. I guess that's more Connorsman's, isn't it? A little bit further down. One thing I was thinking about is maybe making one or even two of those spots a ten-minute parking during post office hours.
Especially while we're dealing with our current parking issue over here on Washington.
Right.
Yeah, I guess there's a parking spot in front of where Connorsman's pull out of their garage.
Uh, now they've, they said it's a double driveway here, so no parking spaces there.
Yes.
So there won't be parking. I've, I've talked to Lisa at the post office, and she, um, they're talking about making some changes with the drive-up box. And maybe taking that away and making it so you have to get out of your car and access it outside box that way. Uh, maybe that'll eliminate some of the people driving and parking their own correction there, which had it, and she says she's witnessed several close calls with people driving up to the box. Um, so that is a concern, but they, they have discussed changing that. Uh, but is that the best place for the ADA spot?
I wish it could be moved to Washington Street.
I guess that would be the preferred side, at least, less traffic going around there. Get into the post office still very effectively.
You mean right here? Okay.
That's probably the better spot. Will it cause more congestion issues for, for us, though?
No, there's no ramp into the post office. So the post office itself is not ADA compliant.
That corner there gets pretty busy with cars parked and then these parks there, and yeah, it's hard to get, it's not hard to get through there, but it's the one person I think parks like three or four cars there, and this pretty much takes the rest of the spot, so yeah.
They, if you look here, it says, there has been some conversation about potential two-hour parking to improve functionality of the businesses near Washington Street. So two-hour parking, um, I would think would be sufficient for Connorsman's customers. And maybe the first spot where they have the ADA, make that a ten-minute parking. And then move, have the town. Do we want to put an ADA spot for the town there?
Endot is almost certainly gonna demand an ADA spot very close to the post office. And probably not on the opposite side of the street.
Right.
So if we said, if we said, we don't want that first one to be ADA compliant, they're probably, we'll put one right around the corner of Washington Street. They may go for that.
Okay. Make that ADA spot a ten-minute parking, and then, um, then over here on the other side, put two spaces, two-hour parking. During business hours. That should make the Golden Turtle happy. It'll give some overflow parking for Connorsman, if people need to go up there, if these are full. Um, and it don't take away very many spaces from him.
What does the mail delivery person, if there's somebody parked there, will they double park or? Because they load the mail in and out of that side door of Washington.
They load mail there, but there's always, there's usually a car parked there that doesn't get in the way of the mail now.
Oh, okay.
So it, it wouldn't get, anybody parked there wouldn't get in the way of the mail, so that's where the postmaster parks, is right there. So. Okay, so we'll put our spots. ADA spot. Washington. And then a ten-minute spot for a spot on you.
I mean, could like the first on Washington, could the first one be ADA and the second one be reserved for the postmaster?
I was thinking maybe. Oh, you mean?
Yeah. So where about like across the street on the sister side, is it what that would be room for? No, then all the people that rent and live in those buildings can park over there.
I think we make this one ADA.
And the one.
And then these, uh, two-hour parking for business hours.
So then where would we park then?
I know, is there a space there that's parked?
Depends on it. Well, yeah, they're not going up Washington, I was gonna say, depends if they put one in, but there is a space like right, right in there.
I've had a few discussions with Lisa about the parking situation, so, um, she's open to suggestions to where to park.
And we'll also say that, boy, this plant has eighty-three spaces. Straight down.
Okay, so that is all the way. Any other concerns, um, further down?
I have a concern where I am at the end of the corner. When we were getting ready to build, we had talked with Endot, they came out, and we had like two or three in front of what's now our walkout basement. Now it's showing nine, and one at the house next door to me. Um, I'm planning on having a business in the near future. Now, if I have no parking, um, I don't know where people are gonna park.
Well, they're not gonna let anybody park on the curb.
And that's probably a.
They're, they're gonna be very resistant.
Well, yeah, there, there were, there were three spots there, and the first one, they said, I wouldn't suggest anybody park there. And I, I agreed with that, but now there's no parking and only one slide in front of the house next to me, so.
I wonder if this area here falls under their thirty-foot. I wonder if this area here falls under their 30-foot minimum.
Probably.
Yeah, they're considering that in intersection. And then there's not enough room to put a parking spot there after that.
Right. Arguably, depending on, arguably, there's room for one?
I will see what we can do.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't, I mean, honestly, I mean, our yard guy was gonna clean the sidewalk there. We actually have an ADA at the end. I mean, I was gonna kind of eventually ask, do we even need to like keep that sidewalk there? Because if someone tried to walk across the street, they'd either be killed or, I mean, there's no crosswalk either, so I'm not really sure why that was put in.
You're talking about this sidewalk here?
Yes, yes.
Well, I'll talk to them about that area right there for your driveway.
And actually, there's not a driveway there. We're just gonna have a sidewalk coming to walk out. There's no more driveway there. The driveway's on the other side on 229.
Okay. I don't think they're gonna be able to give you two, but they may be able to put one there.
If they were, if they were saying that was a driveway, though, that might be able to sneak that in.
At the time of this drawing, that probably wasn't driveway.
Right, and I agree. I definitely don't want one on the curb because I don't want somebody to get hit by a car. So, yeah, I mean, two max would be, depending on if someone parks in front of the house next to us.
I'll just let him know, make sure he understands there's no driveway there. Okay, anything else in this section? Okay. Okay, so I'll get with End dot on all these suggestions and report at the next meeting. Next item on the agenda. There's a company called Pierce that does right-of-way work for different utilities and Frontier... Frontier Communications is wanting to put a new line in through Oldenburg. And we'll go ahead and share that screen. And this is the area that's gonna be affected. There's nothing new gonna happen. This cable is gonna be hung in existing poles owned by Duke Energy, who they already have a contract with to hang their lines. This is just a notification for us to make sure we're okay with them stringing the lines. They have a traffic control plan during the process. They're going to maximum stoppage of traffic will be 20 minutes per segment. So, there's gonna be a minimal disruption to Oldenburg while they do it, and it's all gonna be aerial. And this right here is showing the path. The reason why it starts right here is because it's the state right-of-way beyond this. So, this is all the path through Oldenburg. It'll go up to Washington Street. And then it will go north on Washington Street to Main Street and then back to 229 and on out of town. And crosses at the very end of Washington, at the intersection of Washington and Main, right here. And this is their traffic control plan and it'll, they'll have a flagger if required. And so, traffic will be controlled and the, well, as it says up here, the closures will only be 20 minutes. So, we need the vote to see if we approve his plan and grant them access.
I just want to mention, Brian, the last time they did extra cable work down the brackets, they would put all the Christmas wreaths and trees on. They kept raising their, the wires, and a lot of them are running right in along, right in the same areas we have the brackets for the Christmas decorations. Just curious what they thought about where on the poles they're gonna put them.
The guy said, or the plan says, that they're gonna just make the existing cable platter.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're not gonna actually remove the old cable, are they?
I think they're gonna wrap this around it.
Okay. So, I can ask that?
Yeah. This, these folks are, appear to be super eager to make sure they don't step on anybody's toes. They were very concerned about, are we getting the right permits? Do we have to do anything extra to put it down?
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure that that's taken into consideration when they hang it. All right, do we get a motion to accept their plan?
Make motion to accept.
Oh, second.
All in favor? All right.
Okay.
Okay, next up is me. I need to pass a resolution to transfer funds. We, we will overdraw our insurance fund presently by about $2,000 because of previous payments we've made through the year. So, we just need to pass this resolution to transfer funds from another fund into that fund and then we can pay the bill.
This is not something that needs to go through judicial appropriation process because it's only changing things from one light item to another light item within the general fund. The clerk did a fantastic job, didn't bring that out.
I'm sweating bullets. Brian, I think we still need a motion for it, too.
Yeah. Backwards. They're getting a push-in to accept the resolution.
Make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you. Next with me as well, we need to purchase some more printer paper as well as a new box of envelopes for our town. And I think it's under the amount that it, that you need approval for, but I thought it would be due diligence and bring it up in a meeting. A box of paper is $135 and, no, excuse me, box of paper is $45.50 and the town envelopes are $135. And I can give a box of 500, so they should...
Okay.
John, do you need a motion for that? There's a discussion.
Internal control ordinance covers that and that kind of amount discretion.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the noise ordinance. I just wanted to remind everybody that we do have a noise ordinance. This is more of the animal control ordinance that we have. Nuisance barking has been a reported issue here in town recently. And I know Bill's addressed it a couple of times, so we are on top of it. But I just want to remind everybody that if your dog is out barking constantly, that there are, there is an ordinance against that. And we will enforce that ordinance. So, just make sure that you keep your dogs quiet. All right, the next thing on the agenda is speed limit discussion between Vine and Washington Street. There was, there's been complaints about this or suggestions to End dot about the speed limit on Washington Street. I mean, on Main Street, 229 around, like between Vine and Washington Street. And the suggestion made to End dot was 25 miles per hour. And I had a discussion with Jeremy Shaw and asked him, what if we lowered the speed limit to 20 between Vine Street and Washington Street? And my reasoning behind that is 25 miles an hour really isn't enough to catch people's attention, but 10 miles an hour might. And then we can really start enforcing it at 30, which is the present speed limit. We can, we can write the tickets at 30. That was my reasoning. I don't know what you all think about that. I'll refer to the people enforcing the laws. Do you think that'll make any difference?
School kids are the ones that are gonna, are basically the ones that are pushing the issue. And like I said, we can be here part of the time, but we have problems other parts of town. So, I think we're just kinda wasting our time, really. You know, 30 mile an hour, if you're an over 30 mile an hour, we'll stop them and have a chat with them, stuff like this. If it gets too bad, or we're done, or like 40, 42 mile an hour, I'll run them ticket.
Jeremy does believe, there's a 15 mile an hour recommended speed on the 90-degree. The little yellow sign, the recommended is 15. And so, he could see us lowering the speed limit approaching that, lower than 30, since it's only 15 and a 90.
Is that there the problem on state highway? Yeah, I mean, it's not our decision, it's theirs.
Right, but, but he wants input from the town council on what we feel the speed limit should be. And I told him we would discuss it. And I don't know how you feel, but I think if we're gonna change it, let's really change it.
I would agree with on that sentiment. I don't think going from 30 to 25 really sticks out, dropping down to 20. I think that at least is an eye catcher. The 229, 90, it's 55 going right out there, though, since it's already a really steep speed decrease. We can recommend going from 55 to 30 to 20 within there. But that's, that's a very small window right there.
It's actually 45, 30?
Yes, it does. It drops from 55 to 45 to 30.
Apologies, that'd be another drop right, right within that zone.
And, and he wasn't sure that he'd be able to go to 20, but he would, he would look into it. If we think that that's what we want, he'll look into it. What do you think, Dave?
Wouldn't be a bad idea, that he, let's go in, give him a ticket.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not opposed to going, if we're doing it, let's do drastic, let's jump it down to 20 through that area.
Okay.
Really try to slow people down.
They're gonna make their decision based on two things. It's gonna be, a computer model is gonna say, what will that do to the traffic flow? And they'll look at the history of accidents or incidents there. If there, if there's no history of accidents or incidents there, it's gonna be tough for you to drop it that low. So, we'll see.
Well, on the 90-degree, it's basically one of the rumors that...
Does it get reported to the police? I'm not saying it doesn't. If it doesn't, it won't count.
Yes. I was just gonna say, if it's mainly the kids, maybe a communication with the school to remind them. I know it's not gonna fix it, but if they, I mean, if we don't say anything, it's not gonna fix it. If something is said, then they fix it in the minds of some of the kids.
Actually, it's not mainly the kids. There's a few kids this year that have been an issue. And my, my, my child actually got an email or text message from the school and said they were no, no longer allowed to go up Washington, Washington Street past the post office to school, to the parking lot. They had to come down Main Street and go around the curb. I mean, I've heard it's feeling tires. My daughter was walking home. There was a car driving on the wrong side of the road. But 95% of the people that are rolling through there are not students that are causing the problem. There's semi trucks, there's truck trailers, same thing. There's trucks with campers. The other day, we got some rain, some lady slid off the road into a tree, and the tree went there. She would have been in the building where now three acres actually has their meetings every day. It's in, so my, one semi truck, actually, I don't know if people do retire the other day, because now people want to even stop. They are, they are cutting into that concrete wall and, I mean, they're tearing up, they had to pull over because people just keep flying around the earth. I mean, the digital thing slows some people down, but, I mean, most people just do what they wanna do.
And Jeremy suggested a permanent flashing sign there, and he was gonna look into that and give back to me.
I actually spoke to him the other day for 45 minutes with that customer service lady. And I said, you know, I really feel like it's End dot, the town council, and the police department all need to work together as one, you know, if I agree to get it taken care of. So, yeah.
Okay, so can I get a motion to make a recommendation to End dot to drop the speed limit to 20 between Vine and Washington Street?
I'd make a motion for that.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, recommendation's a big one.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Kate?
Budget meeting dates are in October. We, we had an incorrect budget meeting, so that one is being ignored.
Should that first budget meeting be deleted, since it doesn't? We're having, we're, we're having another first budget meeting because things had to be changed.
Right.
Okay.
The live stream, is that what you're asking?
Right, the live stream.
Oh, no.
Just go ahead and keep that as a record.
It happened.
Right, it did. Okay.
So, our new, our new first reading will be Thursday, October 9th at 5:00 PM. And the second adoption, the second reading, the adoption meeting will be Monday, October 20th at 5:00 PM.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the discussion about the payments for the Heritage Trail. We've got payments coming due. The work is pretty much done. I know everybody's probably noticed that the work on the trail is complete or close to it. There's a few things that need to be done. And we've got a bill to be paid to license for 216,02981, and that's part of the grant. And if I do my math right, is the Freudenfest part of that 43,205? Am I right?
The 20%, match.
Yeah. 43,20596. 96. And there's, there's still money still in the Freudenfest accounts?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was asking for the full amount, the two...
Oh, okay. The full amount was 216,02981.
There's about 2,800 left, so we'll need some additional funds.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, you asked for 2,500, so my name's Mark, I'm the treasurer for Freudenfest. I agree, 43,20596, so maybe a 20%.
Okay. All right, so that, that payment is due. And then we've also got the basketball court... And then we've also got the basketball court portion, which was in the addendum to the, um, uh, grant. And O A raised money for that. And the amount due there is sixty thousand six thirty-eight. Um, but this is the part that I want to discuss. Um, there have been estimates made for the chain link fence and gates. And for the painting and the lining of the, um, and the nets for the basketball court and the pickleball courts. And the current quotes totaling eighty-one thousand sixteen, eighty-one thousand sixteen dollars uh, for those two items. And the portion for paving was sixty-three thousand, uh, in the contract. So O A has sixty-two thousand they've raised approximately. Um, so at some point, the town needs to, um, we, we've set aside seventy-five thousand dollars in our budget uh, to cover any overages uh, from what the raised money and the grant money for the Freudenfest contributed. There's a few ways, different ways we could do it. We can let O A pay the amount for the paving now, complete out of their fund. Or we can pay the money complete out of our funds uh, for the paving, and then O A would pay further on down the line. Or O A pay for the paving and we pay further down the line. Or we split the cost all the way down the line. So we would split the, um,
Sixty-two thousand.
Yeah, the sixty thousand, so it'd be thirty thousand three nineteen. Um, and then that would be the first installment that we would pay. And, and in this way, that's why I was asking about the interest bearing accounts today. Uh, O A will still retain money and collecting interest on it. So they can help us out more later. It's not gonna be a lot more, but it's still more.
Sure.
Um, and, and but then we're gonna be losing the interest on that same amount. So it's kind of a wash. Um, and then the, the, our half of the next installment would be forty-nine thousand three thirty-five at the current quotes. Uh, I've been told, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's a chance that the quotes for the painting are gonna be less than what these are.
We have reason to believe so because the, this one here, the outdoor court spaces that you have there, uh, include the pickleball courts, the nets, the installation of the, the posts, and we feel like we could get that done cheaper.
If you break it apart and do it with separate vendors.
However, on the other one, the, the fencing, uh, we feel like that one could be, will be higher. Um, because now the, the core is bit, been completely asphalted. Now they're gonna have to core and set all those posts in concrete, or they're proposing to do it, set all the, the, the concrete posts prior, which would have been a nightmare, might have to pay.
Right.
So that, that, that will be higher.
Okay, so it loo- it looks like the, the final numbers are gonna be, are gonna exceed the seventy-five thousand dollars that we have set aside. Uh, the number that we're gonna have to make up. Uh, O A's still in process of uh, raising funds, so there's still some funds coming in. Uh, so we won't know that final number until it's done. So, um, I guess the question uh, on the table now is, do we want to split the cost of the, the paving of the basketball court at this time? Or then O A do it now and then go down the line and start our payments for the fence and the, and the, uh, painting? What are your thoughts?
Initially, splitting sounded like the better idea. That way we, we're retaining, they're retaining interest accounts who can, continue to grow at their, at their minimal amount that they're gonna grow in there. Also, it's coming out one way or the other. But my initial thought was, was splitting it, but that's also a lot more coordination. Like if we're, you know, A, we're, we're doing that, so might be, might behoove and actually speed things, speed things up. We just jump on it.
Does that cause a lot more problems if we split it down the line? It's just?
I don't think so. Um, I think it's worthwhile to note that our account only earns one point two-five percent interest, so it's not like we're really needing to, to keep that money in there for, for the interest.
Okay. What do you think, Dave?
Gotta be paid, so we just will split, get done.
Okay. All right. Um, need to make a motion to, to split the pay cost of the paving now, which is sixty thousand. Our portion would be, um, thirty, I gotta read that, thirty thousand three nineteen. And then O A will need to get us a check for the same amount. Do I get a motion to accept that?
I'd make a motion.
He beat you to it.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And do we have an update on the ground?
Yeah, just, uh, tell you how small it's going. So, by the way, that was Jeff Paul, since you did, there are these. Very much. Uh, real quick. So, uh, as you know, it's a lot of good activities happening down at Park recently. Hopefully you had a chance to break it in a little bit. Couple of us took a walk, believe it or not. I took one, so it was good. Real quick, um, so, uh, twenty-one trees were planted, and that's to the, uh, the work of Jeff Paul and his son Ryan with Paul Landscaping. So Jeff, thank you for you, for your work. An old back and a young back planting twenty-one trees down there over the last few weeks. And, uh, a couple of things I wanted to up, update you on. So the trees that were planted for the council was five eastern red bud, nor, but three red oak, American hornbeam, six of those, four honey locusts, and three October glory maple. They're two and a half inch trees, so a nice diameter to start with, give some good girth, uh, to begin with. And so what we wanted to do with the trees is really a couple of things. First of all, last year at about this time, we applied with the Franklin County Community Foundation for a grant to get a start on trees. And they were kind enough to, uh, give us a small grant of seven hundred and eighty-five dollars to kind of just kick us off. And we told them that our plan someday maybe would be to have a memorial tree planting opportunity for folks down there. So they gave us that grant money to start it, kind of literally seed us. And so, uh, we, uh, went ahead with the Freudenfest funds and paid for the trees to be put in, and that was part of our plan to do so. For the Franklin County Community Foundation amount, which was granted, Jeff and I wrote that grant on behalf of the town council. And so they had given you guys that check last year for seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. So requesting, uh, if we might get that check from that, from you, from the F C C up so that they know that it was, it went to the tree planting program that we talked about. That's one piece. And so, um, this is the, uh, note, I was gonna send them on your behalf if you'd like, since we had initiated that small grant. And so you can glean that just to make sure that uh, you're okay with that. All right, very good. So then, uh, if the council's okay with that, Kate, then at some point, if you'd wanna reimburse the Freudenfest for that amount.
Okay.
And then if you like, I can write out a little receipt or however you like to track that. Okay. And then the other quick thing about the trees is that, uh, we are ready to launch, uh, the phase of actually creating a, uh, memorial tree planting program down there. And we have come up with a draft for a public notice on that. And basically, how we thought this could work is that for a thousand dollars, uh, the Freudenfest committee is, uh, giving an opportunity for people to adopt one of the twenty-one trees in the Maypole Heritage Park. And for that amount, certainly you'd get the tree, the cost that it went in to install it, uh, and also an engraved stone marker that we've been working with Batesa Monument with Colt Webberding. It's come up with a really nice engraved stone. And so, uh, the engraved marker would start out with the memory of, an honor of, sponsored by, or donated by. And then with a character limit of about twenty, including spaces, you could put a name or an organization that's sponsoring that tree for a thousand dollars. And so how we thought we might, uh, run this a little bit is that trees would be distributed on a first come, first served basis. So we have twenty-one, and when we, when we get to twenty-one, we're done for now. And who knows, maybe other years we'll plant more, but that would be our first phase. Once all the trees are purchased or adopted, we would actually do a random draw to assign each memorial marker to a tree. So in other words, the selection of the specific tree or where, uh, that memorial donation would go, uh, that would be just open to the randomness, just because it'd be hard to, to try to work through that, right? That, gosh, I want this tree and I want it right here. It'd be a random drawing. Then we would assign the different markers as we go along for the twenty-one trees. And then, uh, the person that would like to do this, they'd get an order form, bill it out with their check. And then we're looking for someone that would like to organize that and take those, uh, inquiries either by phone or, or email or text. So we're gonna name someone to kind of oversee that for us. And so, uh, wanted to update the council on, uh, this is something we had talked about about a year ago, about perhaps at one time doing the memorial tree once we have the place planted. So we're ready to do that, and want to make sure you still have our support. Have our, your support, and then also if this would be appropriate, uh, public announcement that we could put on the Village Voice, the Freudenfest website and so forth.
What's the time limit for somebody to try to go through?
The time limit?
Well, you may get twenty-one of them sold in the first five minutes, but it may, you may get to the end of the year and only get sold twenty of them.
Right.
So I, what's the?
Yeah, we, I mean, we thought, John, just one twenty-one, we're taking care of, they're taking care of, since we got the twenty-one already planted there. So they're already there, so. Yeah, I would think whenever we got to twenty-one, we'd twenty-one. We think we'll, we'll be able to secure that pretty quickly though.
Maybe.
Well, we, the, the, so the council offered their support at the big, when you brought it to us the first time.
Yes.
And we still we still give you ours.
Okay, all right.
So we, yeah, all right, thanks.
Haven't you guys considered also the benches as well?
Yeah. Okay, that is everything on new business. Oh, yes, we do. We need to, one thing we need to do is, uh, appoint the vice president, since Denny was the vice president of the council. And I would like to nominate, uh, Tyler Perper as the vice president of the town council.
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations? Okay, now we'll go to old business. Uh, if you've not noticed, uh, Matt Staley has installed the crest along the fence, the, the railing out there, the new railing that'll be installed on the wall, looks very nice. Uh, it was a great addition, I think, for people dropping down Hamburg Road and even coming down two-twenty-nine can see him pretty easily, so it was a good addition. Uh, Water Street and Pearls, Water and Pearl Street signs, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but at the stop signs at Pearl Street, there's a new fire truck sign and a new pedexing sign. So those have been updated, so you can see them, they're nice and bright. And the fire truck signs are even bigger than they were, so those are, those have been changed. Uh, I've got the information from Aaron Kellerman on the, um, reconciliation between Best Way and the Towns List for trash pickup. I'm gonna go through the list and see, there, there's a couple of problems. Um, but I'll go through that list and get that reconciled, see what the problems are. Uh, so it's, it sounds like we might be overpaying a little bit.
Okay.
But I don't know that for sure yet. But I'll let you know. Hornburger was selected to put the new roof on the shelter house and the, uh, shed, uh, behind the fire station. And they're going to be starting that project in late October, so like the last week of October. And the color is going to match the fire station, the, not the fire station, but the town hall. With the quarterly report from H W C for the Water Street project is coming out shortly. I haven't got it yet, but it will be out soon. And then we'll report on that the next meeting. And this Wednesday is National Night Out, uh, October eighth from six to eight behind the fire station. And do you want to say a little bit about what's gonna be going on?
In conjunction with Franklin County Sheriff's Department, uh, Old Brook Party Department, we're putting hot dogs and hamburgers out there, meet, greet the public. Uh, also, we're gonna have a drug take back, uh, box out here, again, it's got unused drugs, so I'll get rid of it and get them back here. And just kind of a question and answer period, if anybody was show manners, greet the public, no charge.
And that's between six o'clock and eight o'clock on Wednesday night. The last thing on the agenda I have is there's, uh, there've been, there were some complaints about some trees, um, at Water Street and Washington Street on their, on the south side of the street, blocking the stop sign and, and actually needing to be trimmed. The homeowner at that location has su- suggested that those trees be completely removed. And Duke Energy, um, has are looking into removing those trees. So they have not, I was, wanna get a call today for that, but I didn't get it, but they're, they're looking into removing those trees completely, so that won't be a problem anymore trimming those trees.
I think they've been trimmed too.
Recently?
Yeah. Like within the last couple of weeks, do you agree?
Couple of those were put back, but not many.
Okay.
So I met with, uh, Manuel, um, on Friday, and he took a lot of pictures and he's gonna forward those to his boss and they'll make a decision. He didn't see any reason why they wouldn't be approved. Um, any, anything else? Does anybody else have anything to say?
I have a couple things, um, have we, like, made any progress as far as looking for, like, um, people to replace Phil and Tensley or?
We have, uh, resumes and we're going to actively start talking to people now, after this meeting. We do have resumes, and we have a reserve?
Yes. Uh, if it's time right now, I'd like to introduce Rob Rouse, he's in a reserve program. Uh, we've got some paper to jump through right now that I saw it pretty good. Uh, forty-hour pre-basics course, yes, at ten, starts in October. In Ripley County, and they're gonna put a program up for their officers. And Rob will have dual respires, nothing until he completes that course successfully.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I need John to experiment, I appreciate it.
Sure. Do we do that right now, or are you gonna wait until after he's? Or are we, okay, we do it right now? All right, raise your right hand, please. State your, I, state your name.
I, Robert J. Rouse.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To, to, uh, support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
To support and defend the United States, Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And faithfully perform all duties.
And faithfully perform all duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Of reserve officer.
Of reserve officer.
For the town of Oldenburg.
For the town of Oldenburg.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, my only other thing is, I wanted to start a community, um, for Oldenburg that, I mean, I guess we could report to the town council or whatever, but just to start doing some things, um, that are positive, that are community-wide. You know, I was down on the walking trail the other day and I thought, let me be cool, like, you know, the community, the community actually make jackalators, and we actually put them down there on the path and people could walk around and look at them. And a perfect north slip, I think charges like eighteen dollars a person to get into theirs for an adult and something. Just, just different things that the community can do, come together. I guess at one point, there used to be like, um, a flower pot contest or something around town. There's, there's, I think there's lots of things that we could bring the community together and, and do things, um. And I just wanted to try to maybe start, start doing something like that, so. I don't know, like I said, I don't wanna report to you guys or, um.
Do you have any idea of, of members, who the members of?
Yeah, I mean, I know at least one person said they'd do it, but I mean, we'd obviously have to get a group of people together and, um, yeah, just.
So would you put a, a post on the Village Voice or?
Yeah, maybe, I don't know if, you could put something up at the post office, or I don't know how, Lisa does it, if you put it in these first box or, um, just, yeah, I mean, I'd like to see as many people come together and just do some positive, fun things for the community. I mean, you know, for the young, for the old, for everyone, let's, you know, let's bring people together and, you know, enjoy where we live.
I think that's a worthwhile effort. Thank you. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?
Aye.